Seventeenth Planning Board meeting is hereby called to order. So, Tom, if you would read that, please.
All right. In accordance with the governor's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, related to the 2020 Nobel novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. Remember seventeen twenty twenty public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternatively, the public access meeting may be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television, and we appreciate their continued participation. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and then comment via the chat function. Text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate time points in the meeting. A Zoom login instructions are as below. Additionally, public comment may be sent in advance to the meeting to planning at Falmouth Mass at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and video documents and audio or video files may also be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents shall be made part of the meeting record and may be read into the record, summarized, or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the chair. I was not going to read paragraph four, I don't think.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Tom.
And to that effect, we do have some email comments we received from Bob Amen. I invited him to the meeting this evening, but I don't believe he'll be attending, but we do have some written comments that he provided previous with a promise to provide us some additional comments as he continues to go through the zoning bylaw, and that's very good of him.
As we know, it's a tough slog through it. Okay, so, the public meeting, the subject of our meeting tonight is zoning bylaw recodification, spring 2021 town meeting. And we have an article to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by repealing the existing chapter two forty zoning and adopting the recodified zoning bylaw shown in a document on file with the town clerk, planning office, and at Falmouth Public Library, entitled Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts zoning bylaw, town code, chapter two forty, articles one through fourteen dated November 2020, containing a table of contents and one hundred and forty-nine pages of the recodified bylaw dated September 2020. And so this is the hearing tonight. Everybody has been sent, and I hope you all have it there in front of you, the what we're doing tonight. We have, hi Bob Ritchie. We have the slides. Tom, are you going to be putting those up? The PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay.
Right, so I'm going to share my screen, so for the chair, she can't see you. I believe what you have on your screen is what is zoning recodification?
Correct.
Very well.
Okay, since this is the subject, and not everybody might understand what zoning recodification is. It is principally a reorganization of the bylaws to provide for ease of navigation, to establish logical consistent numbering system, to create consistent format, to identify and modernize outdated language, and to that point, our bylaws date back to April thirteen nineteen twenty-six, so you can imagine how language patterns have changed in that period of time. To ensure consistency with State Zoning Act and other state statutes, to ensure consistency with recent case law. Okay, can you pop the next one up, please, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Some of these things town meeting members will have already heard, so the content of some of these slides. We have a number of current zoning bylaw problems. There have been many amendments over several decades, but they've been organized, not only are they amendments, but they've been added in a disorganized manner. Some topics are literally scattered all over the bylaw. There have been many voices, and by voices, that's meant that many authors of these bylaws, so there's a lack of consistency based upon these voices, different writers and their writing styles. There is definitely, as people who've tried to use it, an inconsistent numbering system, inconsistent formatting, use of language, headings, the location of the subject matter, and generally, the organization of the bylaw. There are wording problems, grammatical vagueness, punctuation, and so on. As we were told many times when we're working on this, punctuation is critical. Court cases have been lost based upon the placement of a comma, or one, based upon the placement of a comma. Obsolete and expired sections have remained in the bylaw, so we haven't culled the bylaw in a long time, and these things are just in there, taking up space. It is not up to date with state statutes and court decisions. Next, please, Tom. In summary, these are the issues and the goals. As you will recognize, I am repeating right here, the current bylaw is outdated, challenging to navigate and administer, poorly organized, and lacks consistency in numerous ways. So, our goal has been to build a new bylaw organizational foundation, to be far more user-friendly, increase ease of navigation, and create a consistent framework, language, and style. We also wanted to provide a bylaw that can be amended in a manner that protects its organizational structure and language. Previously, to amend the bylaw, we did the best we could. There was no way we could keep it consistent. The third point is to keep all substantive content unchanged, but change where necessary to produce a logical, connected, coherent document. When you get into something like you're remodeling your house, or you're putting an addition on, you run into problems that you don't necessarily think of. You want to keep it the same and according to plan, but sometimes, to keep it a whole, you have to make these changes. Next, please, Tom. So, these were the proposed and are the proposed bylaw improvements. Create a new user-friendly style for the entire bylaw. Remember the bylaw. Group same topics within specific bylaw articles. Create tables, charts, and lists to organize bylaw language, that you will find extremely helpful. Use headings and subheadings to assist in navigation, that also, when you're using it, you'll find extremely helpful. Disaggregate long sentences and paragraphs into separate subsections and/or into tables or lists. Next. Also, use simple English as much as possible. Some of the statements were convoluted, very difficult to understand. We've introduced color and white space to aid bylaw navigation. Those who do any kind of graphics can understand readily how that would help. The definitions have been cleaned up, updated, and new definitions are provided. One thing we found in definitions is that they were scattered throughout the bylaws, popped in as new bylaws were put in, so our consultants sifted those out and put that into a definition section. Creation of use tables to replace long paragraphs. We alphabetized lists, including use tables, to ease in finding things. And this is a big one, you'll find stumbling all over the place previously, we are replacing Roman numerals with Arabic numbers. Next, Tom. Thank you. In addition to the creation of a new framework, style, and organization for the recodification, several specific sections of the current bylaw were assigned for more intensive review. I just went over definitions, sifting them out from the rest of the bylaw. The creation of use tables, you'll see some, a specific example of that. And non-conforming structures, uses, and lots, that's a big one. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Frank Duffy, our town council, to talk about the process we used as we went through to change things. So, Tom, you can pop off, but be ready to come back in again. Okay, Frank.
Okay, there I am. Thank you, Pat. Yes, this process has been going on for approximately four years, and actually, it's been going on for a lot longer than that. The idea of recodifying the zoning bylaw had its genesis probably about maybe eight or ten years ago, when a number of people who were actually working with the bylaw thought it would be a good idea, but we finally got our act together and got town meeting to approve a bylaw, or, excuse me, approve an article in 2016 that funded this process. So, the goal has been to, I think, and you very ably explained this during your remarks, Pat, to sort of deconstruct and rebuild the zoning bylaw using significantly different arrangements of the text of the bylaw, but basically delivering the same bylaw, just in a much improved format. Over the years, starting in nineteen twenty-six, as you pointed out, the bylaw has been amended many, many times, and there have been two previous efforts at sort of recodification or rearrangement of the bylaw in nineteen seventy-nine and again in nineteen ninety-three, and the result is that we had a document that no longer functioned as a logical, connected or coherent document. So, first thing we did after town meeting approved this project is we reached out to find some people who could help us, and we were very fortunate to find two excellent consultants in the zoning field, probably the preeminent zoning consultants in the state of Massachusetts, Bob Mitchell and Bob Ritchie. We knew both of them from previous experience in other matters. Bob Ritchie used to be when the Attorney General's Office, and I dealt with him there, and Bob Mitchell was in the planning world, and Brian Curry had dealt with him there, too. So, we tasked them with the task of sort of performing an audit of our zoning bylaw, prioritizing all of the problems that we had, and to help us draft a new zoning bylaw. So, they started their work, and as the work progressed, of course, we realized that there was a lot more to it than anybody had really thought of, but we put together in Falmouth a team of people to work with them, consisted of me, it also consisted of the town planner, the assistant town planner, two members of the planning board, two members of the Board of Appeals, the zoning administrator, the building commissioner, and the associate town council, and of course, over time, some of these people changed and came and went. We had meetings either in person, or we had meetings in the remote Zoom format, where we would go through various chapters of the bylaw as they reorganized them. We read them, we commented on them, we agreed. We also provided some background to the consultants to help them understand what we were trying to accomplish. And at the same time, we were looking at things that Pat has mentioned, the language problems, the duplications, the conflicts, the poor grammar, the inarticulate language, the punctuation errors, and a few other things. So, the goal was to come up with this recodification, and I personally, because I've been kind of involved in this for many years, I'm really excited that tonight is sort of the first time we're rolling this out and presenting it to the public. We also have reached out and sent copies, we codified bylaw to people we would identify as stakeholders. We've sent them to attorneys in Falmouth and neighboring communities who deal with the zoning bylaw, to architects, to builders, and to engineers. These are people who, in their regular day, work with the zoning bylaw, who understand it and understand the problems that they used to have, and hopefully, this recodification will resolve. Now, I think Tom, Bob mentioned earlier that we have a comment from Bob Amen. Well, that's wonderful. We sent to him a copy of the bylaw because we want his comment, but there are other people who will have copies of the bylaw and whose comments we really would like to hear. We really want to hear from people who use the bylaw on a regular basis. It's going to help us produce a really superior document to town meeting. I think if you, the people who read this recodified zoning bylaw are gonna recognize it. The language, a lot of it is the same, it's just reorganized differently. There have been some necessary changes by additions or by edits, or format revisions and so forth, but throughout the entire process, we tasked the consultants and we tasked ourselves with trying to, with making sure we did not make any substantive changes to the bylaw. That's a process that's going to take place later, but everything is basically the same. The zoning districts are the same, the zoning boundaries are the same, the permitted uses are the same, special permits are treated the same, dimensional requirements, overlay districts, and all the other substantive matters that have been in bylaw for years and years are there, and they're there the same. It's just going to be a lot easier to find them and to apply the bylaw.
Thanks. And it's been a long time coming. Frank and I both know that. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Bob Mitchell and Bob Ritchie, and they will end, I'm not quite sure how you want to do this, we need their slides up, Tom, at this point, so we need to have both of their faces at the side so we can see it, okay?
Oh, I have the entire slideshow, I'm happy to run it, or if Bob would like to run it, that's fine with me as well.
I don't know. We've been having you run it.
I'm your man.
Okay, so go ahead and do it. Screen share. Are you, are you both okay with that?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you, Pat, and thank you, the Planning Board. I'm Bob Mitchell, one of the consultants, as has been mentioned, and the main goal of this project and the scope of services that we were given by the town was to, as has been mentioned, really create a new foundation for the bylaw, create a new organizational structure for the bylaw, to address all of the different problems that we heard about, you've heard about some of them tonight, with the problems with language. A major problem that we heard over and over again was that same topics were scattered all over the bylaw, and it was hard to either find them or even know that they existed. So, not only were we creating a new foundation and a new organizational framework for the existing bylaw, but this structure is, if it's adopted, will be in place to make it far easier for the future, any amendments down the road that town meeting would make to the bylaw, will become far easier to insert into the correct article of this bylaw because of the way it's structured and because of the way it's numbered, as opposed to so many amendments over so many years, just got added on at the end of the zoning bylaw and added on and added on, which just created an increasing amount of difficulty in using the bylaw. This is the new, basically, article structure. There are now fourteen articles. You can think of articles somewhat as chapters, each substantive in nature, there's a lot of information in each article. The existing Falmouth bylaw has forty-eight separate articles right now, and those articles vary considerably from those that are very substantive in nature to those that have only a couple of paragraphs. Something that only has a couple of paragraphs really belongs along with its other similar topics rather than a separate article. So, we've created fourteen articles, we have a logical progression of the article titles and the subject matter. You start off, what's the purpose and authority of the bylaw, administration, definitions, you can read this on the screen, all the way through use, use regulations, use tables, down to land use permits, performance requirements in general regulation. So, there's a progression through this. Next slide, please. So, I'm going to show you some examples of the new bylaw and a few slides, I'm going to show you examples of the existing bylaw and what it looks like and how it's written, and against what the new bylaw has, has been written and what it looks like, and as Pat mentioned, the style of the bylaw has dramatically changed to make it much easier for people to read things, find what they're looking for, and navigate the bylaw. One of the biggest changes was that in the current bylaw, all the various uses that are allowed or prohibited, or allowed by special permit or site plan review, in all of the zoning districts are all in text throughout the bylaw. And the zoning districts are listed district, sub-district by sub-district. So, example, you're looking at a slide for business districts. If you want to know what the uses are in the business districts, you'd have to look at the business one section, then you'd have to look at the business two section, then the business three section, and then the business redevelopment section. We put all of that information into a table that you see in front of you. Again, bold headings, subheadings, use of color, and the uses listed right down the left-hand side column, and a simple key, why, yes, the use is allowed, and the use is prohibited, while not on this screen, all of the other screens will have SPP, which is a special permit planning board, and SPB, a special permit by the Board of Appeals. One of the other things we've done throughout the bylaw, well, I'll show that later. So, this is an example, and there's many, many pages of these tables, but it's far easier than just finding what you're looking for in a table than it is in text. Next slide, please. So, this is an example, this is the language from your public, the Falmouth Public Use District, and the text on the lower left is what it looks like in the existing bylaw, and this represents so much of the existing bylaw, these long dense paragraphs, and in this case, as you can see, the first sentence alone is a hundred and seven words, and we highlighted it in a level yellow just to show that. No document, probably no document, but certainly no document that wants to make it easy for people to read and understand and find should have long dense paragraphs with a hundred and seven-word sentences. So, we, we pull this apart, and what, it turns out, all that language on the lower left, on the right, you see what it is. It's, it's got, what's the topic? The topic is science and technology, research and development, and it turns out that in that long paragraph on the left, there are seven standards that have to be met for science and technology. Now, which one is easier to read and understand, the one on the left or the one on the right? The other thing is, as you're looking through the bylaw, if you're looking for a particular topic, imagine trying to read through paragraph after paragraph after paragraph, on which you would find on the left, because you actually have to read the paragraph to know what's in the paragraph. But we have created the bylaw that it always has a header of some sort that tells you before you even read the paragraph, what's in the paragraph, or in cases where we can do it like this, we broke it out into a list. So, again, making it far easier to read, headings, subheadings, numbers, lists. Next slide, please. Again, this is, the next two slides will show you the existing and the new, and so a couple of things about this slide. This is existing language, this is article one of the existing bylaw, and you can see the number two forty-one, two, and it has disparate topics. So, the first topic, purpose, and the second topic, application, are related to each. The next four topics are not exempt uses, pre-existing structures, previously issued permits, and existing structures are all not related to the first two topics, and, and again, it's in text, and the, this, what you're looking at is only excerpts of the full paragraphs, so, but it's all in this kind of text, and the paragraphs are, some of these paragraphs are much longer, but that's what you're, the Falmouth existing bylaw looks like, and it has, so let's go to the next slide, and this is the new structure of the bylaw. So, each article, again, as has been mentioned, use of color, use of white space, use of style, we have these lines in here, they make it very clear. Article one is, is the main article, that's the big, the big title, and then under that, you have two forty dash one point one overview, and again, further down, not on this slide, but in the new bylaw, will be two forty one point two or two forty one point three, and then the subsection is one point one A, and then you'll see one point one B, one point one D, and as you can see in number one and number two, there's a little heading, intent, and then number two, purpose. Every section, subsection of the bylaw, paragraphs and lists, has a little heading. So, if you look at the full page, you can immediately, by only looking at five items, four items, however many is on the page, you can immediately know what the topics are on that page, immediately. You don't have to read all these paragraphs. The other thing that was mentioned was the numbering system has changed. The existing bylaw is ostensibly numbered sequentially from two forty dash one all the way to two forty dash fifty, two hundred and fifty-five. So, it's, it's not the page numbers, the section numbers, one through two hundred and fifty-five. Now, because of the difficulty of maintaining that kind of a system, there are large gaps where the numbers aren't used, and there are inserts, so you will see things like two forty sixty-two, two forty sixty-three, two forty sixty-three A, two forty-three sixty-three B, two forty sixty-five, or two forty sixty-eight point one, two forty sixty-nine, two forty seventy-two. It's, it's all mixed up, and it makes it hard to amend the bylaw by inserting new amendments into the bylaw, because wherever you insert that new amendment, you actually have to change all of the numbering for the bylaw from that point all the way to the end, and that's a, that's a tough job to do over and over and over again. The new bylaw is numbered, each article has its own numbering, and each subsection within the article has its own numbering, so if you plug something in, do section one point one A, and you add a number three. So if you plug something in, do section one point one A, and you add a number three here, you don't have to change any other numbers in the bylaw. Makes it extraordinarily easy to plug in new amendments without having to redo the entire bylaw. And again, this is so much easier to read, we believe, than the way the existing bylaw is written. Next slide. As part of this work, we put together a crosswalk, and this is on the town's website as well. And on the left, you'll see the new numbering system and each section. In Article One, purpose and authority, which we just looked at and excerpted that, and you can see overview one point one and one point one A all the way to one point one E. On the right is the current bylaw. So we moved wholesale most all of the language from the existing bylaw, as Frank mentioned. Substantively, we pretty much took everything that's there, tweaked a lot of it, fixed some of our language, updated it, but moved it over. And in some places, we had to add new language to make it reflect state statutes and state laws or to create a section that was missing. And but it didn't move smoothly because we had to break it. The existing bylaw had so many sections that had multiple different topics. We had to break those apart and move them to different new articles. But we tracked all of that, and again, this is on the website and can be used to see where all the new sections came from in the existing bylaw. Next slide. So in going through all of this with the town, the zoning work group and planning staff and town attorney and others, there were a number of sections in the bylaw that were identified for a whole variety of reasons that really shouldn't be or needn't be in the bylaw. And so we tracked that by creating a proposed deletions section, a table. Again, this is available to everybody. And this is just an excerpt, but I used it to show just four examples of reasons why something might show up on the proposed deletion statement. So the first one is a use that's in many zoning districts, which is a telephone exchange. But one thing we always find when we do zoning bylaws and use is archaic language that's left over from, you know, decades and decades and decades ago. And I don't really think anybody is filing applications for telephone exchanges. And I think you probably have to be a certain age to actually know what a telephone exchange is. So that's really not needed. The other one was watershed. Watershed's not an actual use, that somebody comes into town hall to get a permit to build a watershed. Mother Nature builds watersheds, and Mother Nature doesn't need a permit to do that. So it's not an actual use, and so it shouldn't be in the bylaw. The next one, it says building heights and non-conformant structures. Oddly, this criteria or standard or regulation or requirement or whatever you call it does not actually apply to anything in the bylaw. There is nothing in the bylaw that allows for structures to be changed that would fall under this regulation. So if you don't, if you have a regulation that doesn't apply to anything in your bylaw, you don't need the regulation in the bylaw. And then the final one, residential use amnesty. There are a number of sections we found in the bylaw where the language of the section itself had an expiration date. As you can see here, this language of this section said that the section would expire in May two thousand seventeen. And so if you have sections that have expired, they should be removed from the bylaw because they're no longer effective, no longer can be used, and no longer can be enforced. It's extraneous language. So that's an example of the deletions table. And then the final slide I'm going to talk through is the next one. And then finally, the last thing that occurred during this process, just like items were identified to be deleted, even before this process started, and Pat and Frank alluded to this, that they, the planning board's been looking at and thinking about the bylaw and the changes that need to be made for a long time. Well, we incorporated those ideas that they provided. Plus, as we went through the bylaw, other issues were identified that needed more attention, needed a more comprehensive look, perhaps might have had some legal questions about them. And it was, these were outside the scope of the project that we just did. So we began calling the project, just to recodify the bylaw, Phase One. And a Phase Two project will come sometime later if the council approves or agrees. And on that, there's the table with a whole variety of issues, some technical, some policy issues that will require discussion among town folks. And however the town approaches Phase Two, maybe it's Phase Two and Phase Three, but there is a long list of more substantive issues that really need attention, some higher priority than others. And that will be up to the planning board to, you know, develop a path forward for addressing these various issues. So that's a fairly quick overview and a long process. But again, the whole goal was to make this a lot better-looking, better-used, be able to better use it, understand it, follow it, better organize topics where they belong and not scattered all over the place, and bring it up to date as much as we could. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, as people can see from what Bob has gone over, we the Phase Two, we've done as much as we could do under the original parameters that were set out to clean up our bylaws. But as we were doing this, as Bob did mention, there are so many still inconsistencies that so we still have a bylaw that's not totally there as far as completeness, I guess I would say, niceness of use, still some confusing and conflicting elements in that. So in regard to that, we would also be considering requesting funding at the April two thousand twenty-one town meeting to address these, what we were calling Phase Two issues, that it were just bigger than we could handle under this particular contract. And they would be done in a timely manner to avoid any potential gaps in the bylaw that may result from the Attorney General's review of the recodification. We'd like this to be a really smooth transition. And Frank, I'm going to ask you, please, to expand on the Attorney General's review of the recodification and potential problems.
Yes, Pat. I guess I'll start by discussing briefly the decision the planning board made to present the recodification, as you have identified it in the opening remarks to this hearing tonight. We're asking town meeting to basically delete the old version of the zoning bylaw and adopt the new recodified version of the zoning bylaw. We did have two choices. We could have brought a series of articles to town meeting, asking them to approve each change. But that had several drawbacks. One, there's hundreds of possible changes in here that would have to be identified. The number of articles would probably fill up a book, and the town meeting would take a week, and everybody'd be very upset. And we would also then have at the end a bylaw, some of which related back to nineteen twenty-six and some of which related to twenty twenty. And it would just be kind of a nightmare to think about how we're going to deal with that. So you folks made the decision to present the town meeting with the choice of deleting the old bylaw and bringing in the new. Now, when you, a town adopts a zoning bylaw or any bylaw, it is required to go to the Attorney General for review. It's a process which we do every time we amend the zoning bylaw. The town clerk is responsible for assembling the necessary information and all the background information and submitting it to the Attorney General's office for review, which is a process that takes several months. Now, because we are submitting an entire zoning bylaw, including some of the languages that have been brought forward from previous editions of the zoning bylaw, it is possible that the Attorney General may find some problems, inconsistencies, or conflicts with state law and disapprove them. Personally, I'm willing to take that risk, and I'm not really all that concerned about it because we have been dealing with this zoning bylaw for a long time. I think we have identified most of the problems. And if the Attorney General identifies a problem, the Attorney General will disapprove that specific problem, but leave the rest of it intact. At least I think that's the way it will go and hope it will go. So, and if there's a problem identified, we simply come back at the next town meeting and correct it, and then we're all set. So what we will have after town meeting approves this article and the Attorney General renders her approval to it, we will have a new bylaw, all dated in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, actually, I guess, which will be the baseline going forward. And it will also be the baseline for any future amendments. And we should have a logical, coherent, and functional document, and that is the goal. There is the potential risk that the Attorney General may see some problems here that we have overlooked. And because we put together a team to look at it, including the zoning administrator and the building commissioner and the planning board members and the Board of Appeals members, I think we have probably seen most of them. We also have, as I pointed out earlier, sent out copies of the recodified bylaw to the attorneys and the engineers and the architects and other people in the real estate industry. And hopefully, they'll see something that we can address before town meeting and get it straightened out. But that's the process that we're going to go through, Pat, and I cross my fingers that it will go through smoothly. I think it will. Thank you.
We all do. We've spent a lot of time doing this, and it's much, much better than the document we currently have. Okay, now, I see that there is one chat and there are nineteen participants. And Tom, I think you probably, Tom and Thomas, you both have a view of who's there, and if anybody wants to make any comments.
Yes, the chat was actually me asking someone who they were, and we discovered it was, in fact, Bob Mitchell. So thanks, Bob.
Oh, okay.
So we did get some comments from Attorney Amet that I will address in just a moment, if I may. But there was one other thing I wanted to point out in the deletions section. Because as Bob talked about, the residential amnesty use was a section that expired in two thousand seventeen. So that is proposed for deletion. I'm just going to show a couple other sections because I don't think that anybody is particularly concerned about the residential use amnesty, but in effort for full disclosure, so people don't think that, you know, something else is going on under the radar here. These are two other building permit moratoria that are scheduled to be removed from the bylaw. The moratorium on wind turbines. This was a moratorium put in place that expired on May one, two thousand thirteen, and a moratorium on construction of medical marijuana treatment centers that expired in April thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Those two have had a bit more of a history of controversy in Falmouth, but they were moratoriums put in place until a bylaw was established. Those being established and the moratoriums expired, as Bob Mitchell pointed out, those are things that aren't necessary to be in the bylaw anymore. So I just wanted to make sure that if someone saw that, they didn't think that someone was, you know, trying to bring back, you know, wind turbines or something like that. There's a provision for that. Those are simply moratoria. So to Attorney Amet's comments. And I spoke with Bob earlier today. I gave him an opportunity, let him know that we'd be happy to hear from him. He is going to provide some additional comments for us as well. In his comments today, he's noted that he spent several hours carefully reviewing the draft bylaw, checking the new provisions against the respective old. It's slow-going, and particularly with their real estate practice being extremely busy these days. And he says, "I've only taken time to go through a fraction of the document with the care that it deserves and hope the planning board will continue to accept and consider comments in the coming months." So the redraft comes before town meeting in April. It will be approved. And to Bob's statement, yes, that is exactly our intent. Bob goes on to say, "I've noticed a number of typos and errors in reference to the State Building Code three eleven point zero, and the definition of principal structure seems incorrect. I've seen at least one change that I think is substantive and therefore not appropriate, where no change in the meaning of the bylaw is intended." That is a change in section two forty, and I've forwarded these on to Bob and Bob and to members of the board as well, I believe. That is a change in section two forty-two point one B, one paren dot B, a numbering system, by the way, which is going away, which replaces approved and or endorsed to improved and endorsed. When town meeting amended the bylaw, Article twelve of nineteen ninety, special town meeting on ten ninety's unanimous vote, the explanation was that the article codified existing planning board policy. As adopted in nineteen ninety, the bylaw means that if a lot has a minimum required fringe on a way shown on a plan endorsed by the planning board, even a plan endorsed, pardon me, even a plan endorsed A and R, the lot would be eligible for a permit, subject obviously to a minimum dimensional requirement and instruments of recording such as road construction covenant. This makes sense because of a plan, this makes sense because if a plan was endorsed A and R under chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L definition of subdivision, the planning board must have determined that the way is either a public way or maintained as a public way or shown on a previously approved subdivision plan or predates subdivision control and was determined by the planning board to be a sufficient weight with grades in construction for the proposed use. The planning board, having already made that A and R determination, resulted in its endorsement of the plan, the building commissioner can issue a permit. The proposed change would mean that only lots shown on a subdivision plan, paren's quote, approved and endorsed, end quote, would be eligible for a building permit. Note that the proposed section two forty-two point one B paren's one unclosed paren C period only applies to ways that existed in nineteen fifty-six. So it does not address ways created after that. It's plainly wrong to exclude A and R lots from being buildable. In any case, the proposed change significantly, in my opinion, badly alters the meaning of the subject section of the bylaw. This should not happen in the context of the proposed formatting. Now, as interesting as that might not have been for the broader viewing audience, this is exactly the sort of thing that we're hoping to have from folks who are familiar with the bylaw, to point out those issues that they may have, so we can sort of bring them into the lab and see how they pan out. Because we've talked before, a lot of the word work that's gone into this is with grammar and correcting paragraphs and punctuation, which can absolutely change the meaning of a sentence. So we welcome those comments, and we'll bring them in and take a look at them and see if, in fact, that's what they are. And I know that in Bob's comments, he pointed out a couple other things that I'd noticed as well in the bylaw as well. So this is the sort of content that we're looking for from people who deal with the bylaw, so we can take a look at, and having it in writing is great. We do have a continued hearing for December one, and we will continue to discuss it after that point. But to the point, and I'll be quiet now, this is exactly the sort of content we're looking for, people reading and looking at the bylaw.
Thank you, Tom, for that. Since we have nineteen participants, is there anybody amongst the participants who wishes to say anything or ask any questions at this point?
Anyone who might have any comments, if you just want to write into the chat, you'd like to be, to speak to an issue, we'll elevate you into the room. I'll continue to monitor that.
Okay, because we've pretty much taken care of everything here that we had planned to do tonight, giving a really broad history and overview of the process, the, and the major changes that we changes that we see is taking place to make it much easier to use as a bylaw for the town. So that was really our main goal tonight, to do this, and then to see if anybody has had any time to look at it, since it's gone out several weeks ago, to most people, to see if they have any comments that we can use at this point. Since I don't see any more chats, yes, Charlotte. You're muted, Charlotte.
I'd just like to make a comment. Each of the people who have spoken have said how long and hard people have worked on this, and it's true. And I must say, it's a little disappointing. I understand that it's a big, thick thing to go through, it's very dense, complicated, specialized information, but in fact, a big number of people do use the zoning bylaw and refer to it. People who are buying houses, people who are investing in property, people who are thinking of making a development here in Falmouth, this gets to be an incredibly important source of information and guidance to them. So it's disappointing tonight to me to see so few town meeting members tuned into this, and others that we've invited participation, and hoping for comments, not to hear from them. And I hope as we go forward to our December public hearing and to the other hearings that will happen in advance of the April meeting, that we'll get greater participation. A real effort was made not to change the bylaw, just to reorganize it, so that we would be able to be here tonight saying, except for changes in state law, we didn't make any changes in the substance of the bylaw, and to reassure people to that. But if they're not tuned in, they're not going to hear it. So I think we have a lot of work left to do getting people informed and getting them involved. I want to particularly thank Bob Amet. He is an absolute expert in our zoning bylaw, and to, for him to donate his really valuable time to reviewing our work is a very generous thing for him to do.
And adding on to what Charlotte said, too, we have heard so many times that Falmouth is a difficult town to work in, and a lot of that had to do with our bylaws. So I would hope that those who have complaints about how difficult Falmouth is to work in, that they take the time to review it and look at their special complaint areas, and see if we've managed to make it simpler and easier to use. Does anybody else on the board have any comments, questions? Yes, Jim?
I actually have started using the draft with the red line in it, just because I find it simpler to use, I just keep it open, and it's, I like the computerized version, but if I'm using a paper version, I'd rather have our, the one in the red book that was given to us, that's faster to go through with tables and see the same thing and see the draft. I'm appreciating it already.
Yes, it's very much easier, isn't it, Jim?
Yes.
To use. Pam?
I just wanted to thank everyone who worked so diligently on this. This is really masterful. The reality is, for the average citizen in town, they don't care. I mean, the reality is, this is not exactly the most energizing, exciting document we've ever had. And from years and years and years on this planning board, another planning board, it's so important, but you don't realize how important it is until you need it. And so understanding all of that, I just want to thank you for doing all that work that you did, and the Bobs. So thank you.
I'm just going to make an additional personal comment. This is my 20th year on the planning board. 20 years ago, one of the motivations for me to run for planning board was the zoning bylaw had to be redone. The cogs of government move very slowly, so this is tremendous for me to see this coming about now. Tom?
If I may, I'm going to make one more screen share, just to point out to the viewing audience and the folks, because this is recorded, and folks can look at this later on, as to where they can find this information. So you'll bear with me as I do one more screen share here. So I believe that looks like the planning board's website. So Planning Department's website, here at the bottom is the recodified zoning bylaw and the track change version. So when you click on those, you'll find the recodified bylaw. It has the crosswalk and the deleted sections we discussed previously. It starts off with a letter to the folks who are reviewing it, but this is the recodified section, and then below that is a clean section of the bylaw, which is the reading without all the mark-throughs and strike-throughs and bolds on it. So this is what will actually go to the Attorney General as far as the bylaw that'll be adopted at town meeting. So you can, for comparison purposes, go through the crosswalk and look at the track change versions on the website. They are also available in the town clerk's office, there's a copy in the planning office, and the Falmouth Public Library has been gracious enough to allow us shelf space for two copies, that's what I was looking for, for two copies of the bylaw there, for folks who want to look at the print version.
And that's in the reference room.
That's correct.
Anybody else?
Pat?
Yes, Bob?
Hi, I would just add on to what Tom said, for anybody out there that wants to go to the website to look at the proposed draft and the crosswalks and everything, I would actually suggest you take a quick look at the existing bylaw on the website. Just take, just take a quick look through it. You saw some excerpts from it tonight, but when you look at the whole thing quickly and look at the new bylaw, well, I think you'll make up your mind.
Very valuable suggestion, Bob. Thank you. Okay, Tom, you're, okay.
I've got too many screens open to find my button to unmute. So once again, here on the town planning board website, under the town code, you can click on the town code, and it'll bring you to Chapter 240, which is the zoning bylaw with all of its Roman numerals and all the good stuff we were just talking about moments ago. So thank you, Bob, for that insider tip.
Okay. Anyone else has, have anything to say? Okay, and I see there are no more chats, so I have to assume from that that we, although we've had 19 participants total, no one, there are a number of people listening, but no one wishes to make comments at this time. So with that, I want to thank Bob Ritchie, Bob Mitchell, and Frank Duffy for joining us tonight in this endeavor. Thank you so very much. You've added tremendously to this, really appreciate it. And of course, the two Bobs, it couldn't have been done without you. Thank you.
And I will be following up with town meeting members with the link to this meeting that they can watch at their leisure as well.
Great, thank you, Tom. So with that, it is now 7:29. Oh, wait a minute, I need to mention that our next meeting is November 24th. So, and there'll be an agenda for that coming out, okay? So with that, I'm adjourning this meeting at 7:29. Thank you all so very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.